Yeah, the expectation will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, Mrs. Shuboy, our mission statement, please.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community.
Our roll call. Deb, here. Danielle?
Here.
Sherry?
Here.
Angela?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And I'm here. You have four. Okay, at this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve-
Mrs. Mission, before we go there, I'd like to request that item 6A be removed from the consent agenda to make it a separate action item. Line item, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I will need a motion to approve the change of agenda. We are going to take 6A and make it number seven as a separate item, and then the rest of the numbers will just go eight, nine, ten, and so on through the rest of the agenda. Is there a motion, please?
So I say, I'd like to make a motion to-
No, just a motion to change the agenda.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to change the agenda.
Do I have support? Any discussion?
Why are we moving the personnel report out?
I would like to discuss it.
The whole entire personnel report?
Um, no, just the boys' basketball position.
Then why are you moving the whole personnel report out? If you just want to discuss one other thing.
I'm new and I'm learning, so if you could give me some help, that would be fantastic.
I just gave it to you, I just asked you why you did it.
That's why I did it.
So can we just move out the one piece?
Nope, that's not what her-
Okay.
That's not what she requested, I was just asking when it was time to discuss.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, at this point, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda without the personnel report.
I don't think we'll approve the consent agenda without the personnel report.
Any discussion, Mr. Wombley? Yep.
You have a second?
I'm sorry, um, did Angela's or somebody second?
Somebody seconded, yes.
I seconded if you needed.
We have a second now. Do you have anything?
I have no questions on the claims accounts or corrections any minute.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number seven.
So we can start discussing?
Well, you need to make a motion of what you want to do here.
Well, no, she said, she said she amended the agenda because she wanted to discuss.
Got it.
She discusses the item first, and then if a motion wants to come forward. But you, you wanted to move it because you wanted to discuss it.
Correct. Okay.
Add it.
So have it.
Okay.
Discussion.
I guess I have a couple of questions regarding the, um, the way the interviews were conducted. I guess my first question would be, were the football and basketball schedule, um, interviews conducted in the same way?
There was a committee of varsity coaches that were asked to be part of it. There was a series of varsity coaches that did participate in the interview, and they submitted their request to me as well as Mr. Reinhart.
Okay, so why didn't we see it?
We did.
No, we didn't.
Was it my packet?
It was not in my packet.
Well, um, hiring is the superintendent's job, so I didn't realize it was the request that the board wanted. I only added this one because there was a board member who expressed concerns regarding this position, so I added the backup to this, for this personnel report.
Okay. I guess my second question then would be, was the job really open? Were all the candidates interviewed as if the job are open?
Yes, there was, I believe there was three candidates that were interviewed or applied for the position. Unless I had reason to not provide a person who has the position. This particular case, because it's part of the teacher contract, is why we did the formal interview. We really don't, we usually don't have multiple candidate interviews that are to be positioned. This particular one, because we had a teacher, we went through the interview process, and I did discuss that with Mrs. Ranger, the union president at the time, why we were doing it that way.
One second. Another question would be, why was there not an administrator from the high school on the panel?
The director of-
Was Reinhart on the panel?
The director of athletics ran the interview, just said that if there was an administrator unopening another position, those administrators would be part of that interview, that process.
Okay, it just seems like a job is important, we would have had a little bit more well-balanced committee in place. That's, I think it's a responsibility of the district to make sure that we did.
So-
I guess, I would disagree.
Wait, maybe, no, wait, I can ask the question. So you're challenging, you're challenging that the process wasn't done properly?
I think it was a little one-sided.
And you, because you were part of the process, and do you understand that our job is not to hire and fire?
Well, it's also our job to make sure that the correct people are in the interview process and it's fair.
So you're saying that this process wasn't fair because you have firsthand knowledge how that it wasn't fair?
I don't-
You think so?
Yeah.
Okay, but the athletic director was part of the process.
I understand that.
The athletic director worked with coaches, we don't. None of us do. That's not our job. So to come and say that the process was a joke, I think the email you sent to us last night that the process was a joke, I, I just, I don't understand where you're coming from.
That's fine, you can agree to disagree with them.
I'm not agreeing to disagree, I'm telling you that I don't, you, what you're saying makes no sense.
That's your opinion.
It is.
Let me just wait for my notes, I'm sorry.
Can I ask one question? This Brian, would you say that you must have been required for basketball because there was questions? Because we didn't get one for the football?
Bridgette did come to me and, um, about, and I've forgotten the date, I don't know the exact date, she, she came to talk to me about it, and expressed that there were multiple people that interviewed and a teacher, and excited about it.
I just wondered what the difference was between football and basketball, what happened in your experience.
Kobe, the committee report was in my packet, so I guess the question is-
For this, for today?
No, you're talking about the last one, why we didn't get it for the football, is what our question is.
I don't know why this, the board, it was not uploaded to the electronic recording. I did not upload that. So when the packets are printed, I don't know what documents are in packets that go out. The documents that I had for the recommendation of Mr. Reinhart and the committee's recommendation were part of that packet. I have never put those in packets before. The only reason why I did it this time was because as a, there was a concern, or I don't know if the concern is the right word, because there really wasn't a concern at that time when we had the conversation.
No, it wasn't.
It was, that's the only reason why I added it. But the packet is, um, the recommendation for the football was the exact same process as we did for the basketball. All the varsity coaches were invited, and there was a, a small group that was able to attend, and they ran the interviews. And the reason why we asked varsity is because the expectation is the person running a varsity program should understand it's more than just the varsity level, it is a program you're looking at. And all of our, we have very successful varsity programs, so that's why we asked the varsity coaches to be part of it.
I guess, Bridgette, if you look at your email, when you, when you said you didn't, you wondered why we did this process, it was a waste of people's time. It's part of the contract to do it, and it was put in place that each year, the jobs come back open. And you say whether you want the job or you don't want the job again, that's part of the contract. That happened because of an incident that happened with a coach a few years back that we had to put that into place. So the job is, it's not, when you, when you talk about the football coaching position, that was a vacant position that was left vacant by the death of John Coker. So we were, we were doing interviews and hiring, okay? If John had not passed away, John would have had to apply, you know, had to say yes and go through the process. That's what the whole basketball thing, but because it gets posted, because that's by the contract, other people decided that they wanted to apply for the job. So that's where the interview has to come into play. And that's, so it's not a waste of time, it's part of the contract, we have to do it that way. Now, if, if there's down the road, if the board thinks that that, that's not something that we want to do, that if a coach has a good evaluation, proper, all of that, why do they have to go through that?
I think that's a little ridiculous, but-
I will agree, it is a very time-consuming process, and it was put in, I believe in 15 and settlement of the R and B contract, that it's a yearly posting every year. And in 99% of the time, the coach that has it, gets it, Mr. Reinhart, who's currently the athletic director or anybody previous, I would sit and say, okay, are there any issues? Do you have any concerns, any? It's always been, no, there's been a couple times, I shouldn't say always, there's been a couple times, that we have not brought back people, because there were concerns and issues, and the evaluation wasn't good, so we chose not to renew them.
Okay, the union agrees with this process?
It's part of the contract.
This, this, yeah, you're right, this is, was an negotiated item that was in the, in the settlement of, I believe it was in 15, that for the Schedule Bs, there is a yearly posting.
They didn't see any issues with doing it like that?
They, it's never been brought to my attention from the union, but it was at the table that it was negotiated, and it was agreed upon between their side and our side.
But so when we negotiate with them, I know we talked about it, that's something we want out of the contract, we have to have that discussion.
I can't hear. Kyle, I couldn't hear what you-
Because the job is yours, your evaluations are good, the job is yours, you shouldn't have to worry.
Well, it says it's not tenured, correct? It's not a tenure position? Let me look at the posting.
No, it doesn't, the posting doesn't say, it does say that, Bridgette, it's not a tenure.
Yeah, which is just-
You don't, you don't gain tenure for the teacher.
Because Schedule B is part of the teacher's contract, that's, that's, that's the bottom line. And it's, it's procedure. And if it's, if it, if the board decides that that procedure is not something the board's in favor of, then that's what negotiations are all about, and that's what we can discuss later tonight when we go into closed session for negotiations. That can be, that can be where that discussion happens. But this, what, what happened, what is going on, is our process, and it was rightfully done. Whether, whether you can agree with it or not think it was rightfully, but nothing was done improper, nothing was done wrong, the contract was followed.
Anybody else on board that wants to discuss this topic or this issue? Do we need a motion then?
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the personnel report that was a former consent agenda item as presented.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the bond update of the Richmond Middle School roofing project.
Hello, Jerry? Hello, everyone. Favorite guy of everybody in southeast Michigan right now, this school under construction, so. All right, so we, we mentioned a while ago that we are still coming out of the, the world of the pandemic, and there are some-
I'm not sure, can everybody, because I can, it's hard to hear, and I'm not sure that microphone is really working.
All right, I'll just, I'll just snuggle up to it.
That's right.
All right. The, the progress is, is as expected, but we do have some material issues, and what we have in front of you tonight is a request by the roofing contractor on the middle school to consider an alternate system. This is a system that is being installed throughout the district, but we did have a full tear off scheduled for a portion of the middle school. The materials that are required for that are, are unavailable. That has to do with the freezing down in Texas that's upset a lot of things with chemicals and the construction industry. So the solution is one of those rare times where we can actually save the district some money in this alternate system and get the material faster. So I guess from that, if there are any questions, I'm here to address them.
Can you kind of just give a big picture of what, what this entails rather than a tear off?
Sure, so the biggest savings here is really labor. Uh, the base contract was to remove the structure, or not the structure, the roof down to the metal deck. So that would include the insulation, anything below the membrane itself down to the deck, haul that all off, bring in new insulation, tapered insulation, and new nailers on the perimeter. The alternate is to just remove the membrane and replace it with, Duralast is the name of the, the brand of the system, but basically it's the membrane that protects you from the water coming in, so that would be replaced. What would not be replaced is the actual roof insulation itself. In doing this, they will inspect and make sure if there's any saturated areas of insulation, we will cut those out and replace those. The numbers that you see right now don't have that included, it would be much less than that, but that's the order of magnitude. If we go up there and there's no saturated roof insulation, that would be the full credit to go to this alternate system. Does that cover it, Ryan?
So it's approximately about $200,000 savings from the original contract that was approved. Again, it's going to fluctuate because until you get up there and you start cutting and looking, um, you know, it's going to be somewhere in that ballpark.
Is it as well or as good as what we are planning, what we were going to do?
So-
Is it going to last as long?
It will last as long. What you lose a little bit is the R value, the insulation value. If we replace all the insulation with brand-new insulation, the R value would be higher. But with where this is going, that would be many years of energy savings before you would pay back this, the savings that was there. So we, we kind of term this as what you had was the best roof, we're in the better section, we're, it's a 20-year warranty. As far as the roof and the water management of it, it is equal to what we were considering. The savings is in the insulation, so that, that part, you are, you are not gaining that.
So what if, um, we want the better roof? What's our, what's the risk that we have not knowing we're not going to be able to get it this summer?
You have a risk of escalation of the pricing, because I believe we would be outside of the contract terms of where we were, we were supposed to install it this year. Depending on how things go, there could be an increase that we would be owing to the contractor to do it next year. Reality is, in order to get the material, it's going to be too close for us to try and wait and tear this roof off later in July and get it back on in time for school, along with all the other improvements that are going on. So the risk would be, we would delay to next year, and there could be a price increase. What that is, I don't know, it may not if everything settles down, but that's the risk you have, Ryan.
So in, in your packet, you'll see a map of the middle school. It's shaded in a light gray. I think it's referenced as section 10, 11, 12, and 13. The dark gray section was what was put on in the 2014 bond. So by adding this, the entire roof will have been completed in the middle school with that back section having a 20, 20, 25-year life expectancy, and we're already seven years roughly into the first part.
So what happens with the gaps, like, like where the old stuff to the new stuff? Does it get mashed up, or it gets-
It'd be mashed up, there, there will be a-
I mean, there won't be like a camp or a-
No, no, it, it, there is a, there's a detail for matching up to that, so.
Some of this, when you look at that roof, there is a, what is it, a wall?
A span, it kind of goes up, so it kind of, the natural seam that they're coming up,
in some areas, not all.
This roof system itself, it has been installed, part of this building and the elementary. It is a solution that we look at when we know we don't have problems with the roof insulation. Here, with the analysis that was done in the past, it was thought that there may be some, so we just went with that full tear off. It's, it's, it's a serviceable and a quality roof, it's not, you're not going down in a memory quality.
The other cost we talked about was if we hold off till next year, the air conditioning units that were on here, now we're taking all those off next year, put the roof on and basically putting it back on.
Yeah, so there, there's a lot that's going on with adding the air conditioning, we are, it's a good time to do it when we're doing the roof, because all those penetrations and when we set those condensing units down, we do that after the roof goes on. If we wait till next year, we have to put those units on, and then next year, we don't completely remove them, but we would have to remove them to get the other roof.
Anybody else have any other questions?
You said it is a 20-year warranty on the roof, you said?
Yeah, 20.
So in case it ends up being, and when they tear it off, if there is any extra issues, they will fix it, but as of now, we're thinking hopefully there are no extra water issues?
That's, that's what we're, that's what we're crossing our fingers on.
We have two other roofs already currently done like that in the district.
Section, sections.
Sections.
Is that the auditorium that was just done? And then the kindergarten wing of the elementary school?
Yeah, and that was on last, we put that on actually last year. The nice part about Duralast, it's a pretty local product, and we can get it readily available. That roof was actually tentatively scheduled for this summer, but because of how quickly they could get it, we put that roof on last summer, and the elementary pulled out where it had.
So the action item is to amend the contract to allow us to do the Plan B, if you will, I don't know if that's the right term, but this alternate roof, so that we can get that done this summer.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, and again, thank, thank the district for your patience as we're going through this one. Trust me, it's going to be worth it.
And I just got a quick update on the bond. On this weekend, the movers finalized moving everything, they'll be back, or they will be back, excuse me, one more time, to move the office areas out of the elementary school, the rest of this stuff, and the high school. You can see we moved the middle school office over here because they're starting the demo. It's begun, it is, you walk in, and in the building, ceilings, lights are down, it's, it's, it's a good mess to have, but it's also very exciting at the elementary school, the, the new entrance is being put in for the preschool, early childhood wing, you see the sides, siding coming off, and it will be a very nice and full ground.
Before we go on real quick, I do see a couple people in the audience who do not have masks on. I'm pleased, requesting that you please put a mask on, it is part of our requirement. Thank you. Okay, we're now going on to our presentation, the recognition of our retirements. We have two of them.
We have Mrs. Dobbs. There she is. Come on up, Deb. Come on. Tammy's going to talk about Deb's experience. We, Deb is retiring from the district as a transportation director. Before Tammy begins, I will just say, I, there has been never an issue in transportation. Deb has handled that department with class and efficiency and, but she's done a great job, so she is, she will be truly, truly be missed. I think you just have to use the arrows sign. I don't know if it's a PowerPoint. Yeah, or just scroll up.
Debbie Dodge joined our transportation team in October of 1992, over 28 years ago. She started as a substitute driver, and two years later became a regular part-time bus driver. Debbie later became a full-time transportation coordinator and driver, then later transportation coordinator dispatcher, working under the leadership of her predecessor, I hope I get this right, Diana Zinn Pagliotti. Debbie learned more than anyone else about running the transportation department. After many years of her hard work and commitment in our transportation role, Debbie was promoted to Director of Transportation in 2017. She's done a great job over the years running things in the district's transportation department and in its partnership with New Haven. She also directs New Haven. She's recruited and trained bus drivers, planned bus routes, field trips, athletic, and many other curricular and extracurricular trips, tracked mileage and careful usage, fuel usage for state reports, handled summer transportation, and always found a driver for the City of Richmond Summer Recreation Program. During winter months, Debbie had a very important job. She woke up early to provide information so decisions could be made about whether a school could be run or had to close for a snow day. Her dedication never stopped at driving. It's just as impossible to count phone calls, emails, and a number of times Debbie assisted parents, students, drivers, administrators, and just handled issues. She always made it look easy, even when it wasn't. After dedicating more than 28 years to ensuring our students safely arrive at school, back home, and to and from their extracurricular activities, Debbie is starting a new adventure called retirement. You can't think of anyone else who is more deserving of retirement than Debbie. Rumor has it, she plans to build a new retirement home and enjoy her crafty side doing sewing and embroidery. Rumor also has it that she invested in a new embroidery machine, which made her have even more fun. The good news for our district is Debbie is planning to come back and help us out and keep our transportation department running smoothly. Thank you, Debbie, for all you've done for Richmond Community Schools, we wish you all the best for long, and happy retirement.
It's time to invite the board to come up and congratulate Debbie.
Thank you. Here's your bell.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Most of the time. Yeah, I did. Thank you very much.
Deb, do you want the box that you gave?
Thank you.
I have to share one story regarding Deb. She is, as Tammy said, she is the one I talk to in the morning, 4:30 in the morning, sometimes the night before about snow days, so forth. And there was a time I called, I want to say like six in the morning, and she said, "The back roads are kind of icy, but the main road streets are fine." I think, I think we should close, it was early on in my superintendency, and I said, "Deb, it's, we're, we're fine." She said, "I don't know." Well, I didn't follow her advice, and that was probably the worst- Well, I didn't follow her advice and that was probably the worst decision I made regarding that. It was a slick icy day, probably every kid reminds me of it to this day. So ever since then, when she says we need to close, we close. She definitely has it. So again, thank you Deb for those many late night conversations, early morning texts, et cetera, to make sure our kids and our staff are safe. So appreciate it. Second retirement. Anna unfortunately could not be here today, but Christie, who's known her for many years, is gonna be up here talking about her.
She's already started traveling. I'm here tonight to honor and congratulate Ann Wujek on her retirement. Some of you may know her as Ann O'Connor. Ann began her career in Richmond in the fall of 91. Her nearly 30-year career here was devoted to the students in the special education department. While most of her career was spent at the middle school, Ann also spent time at Lee working as a teacher consultant. I say that Ann devoted her time to the students because that is exactly what her number one priority has been. I have had the privilege of working with Ann for my entire career here as well. One of the first things I learned from Ann is how to be a fierce advocate for our students. If you know Ann, you know she's a straight shooter and she tells you exactly what she thinks. She taught us how to communicate with staff and administrators and showed us how to build relationships with parents. When I started this speech, I reached out to a parent to add words from their perspective. I've removed names, but I thought it was appropriate to quote her exact words. She said, quote, "Ann is one of the most caring, understanding and knowledgeable teachers I have ever worked with. From the very first time she met my son, she flat out told me, 'I know there's a lot more in there than he lets on.'" She was the first teacher to say that to me. I lovingly refer to her as my son's other mom because I completely trust her judgment and know that she 100% has my child's best interest in mind and has fought alongside me when I needed her to. She is the best of the best and is truly irreplaceable. If you've witnessed Ann working with students, you know that the relationship she has built with them is amazing. Whether she's teaching life skills like delivering mail to the board office or helping them learn appropriate social skills in the hallway or accompanying them to Special Olympics, you more than likely saw her with a big smile on her face while interacting with the kids. In closing, I would like to use Ann's own words from her 1991 resume submitted when she applied to work at Richmond. She stated in her professional objective that she would like to work as an educator, giving children the opportunity to develop their maximum potential by teaching them to communicate effectively and express ideas in all subject areas. I can attest, Ann, that your objective has been met. Congratulations on a fabulous career and we wish you well. Enjoy your retirement.
To echo what Mrs. Lashbrook said, I had the pleasure, pleasure of working with Ann every day when she would come to the board office with her students. And she truly does teach them the life skills that are not in a textbook, but that our kids need each and every day. And she's very compassionate and patient with them. So thank you, Ann, for your dedication.
We, the board wishes to thank both of our retirees this year for their dedication and their service to the students and the community of Richmond Community Schools.
Hey guys, Miss, Susan Burkett retired last year, never got developed. It's out of order.
I'm just gonna say. I'm sorry, you're out of order. You can, you can address that during public comments, please. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we have our buddy bench and bronze award recognition. Please step up.
Oh, really? I know. Hello, I'm Julie and I have a young lady that I would like to introduce to you today. We have Elena, Claire and Ashlyn. And Anna is also part of this group, but she cannot be here tonight. These girls recently completed earning their Junior Girl Scout Bronze Award. The Bronze Award is a project that requires each girl to work 20 hours, each of them 20 hours themselves, towards a project that will have a positive, sustainable impact on their community. As part of one of their badges, the girls had talked about problems in their local community and possible solutions to those problems. And this was about three years ago that they started this and it started with a letter that they wrote to the school. So I'm gonna read that letter out quick. Says, "Dear Mr. Coach and Board of Education, our school is amazing. We think we know how we can make it even better. We noticed some bullying and people that don't have someone to play with on the playground. We were wondering if there could be an, be extra staff at recess and if there could be a buddy bench on the playground. Our troop would like to donate a buddy bench if the school agrees to get someone to explain the buddy bench to our school. Sincerely, Girl Scout Troop 75076." So that letter was written almost three years ago, but it was the start of what would become their Bronze Award project. So now I'm gonna let you, the girls, tell you about their project.
We wanted to make a buddy bench, but found out our school already had one, but nobody knew about it. So we wanted to make a sign and teach kids about the bench.
We made a video that told kids how to use the bike. Kids can sit on the buddy bench if they need a friend and someone can come up to them and ask them if they want to play.
What's good about having a buddy bench is it helps kids who are shy or maybe new to a school, or if someone is playing big group games, they could find more kids to play.
We also raised money to make a sign and buy a book that told about the buddy bench. We donated this to Willie Elementary and Proust Elementary.
This is our sign. And this is our book.
So I'm really proud of these girls. They learned a lot about leadership and working together as a team towards a common goal. They learned that sometimes being a leader means letting other people take the lead, even if that leads to mistakes being made. Sometimes our best learning comes from making mistakes. So now, we do have their official award pens to hand to them and their certificate of recognition. This was a big project and you guys worked really hard on it and I'm really proud of you. Thank you.
Congratulations ladies, nice job. Okay, our next item on our agenda is our building administrator and central office evaluation tool.
Here with us is Scott Corba from Collins and Blaha. In your packet, you have the recommendation to move the administrator, the building level administrators in the central office, which would be, you know, in the, in the RAA, Mrs. Lashbrook and other central office personnel, to this evaluation, which aligns to what the superintendent's evaluation currently is. In the packet also are all other evaluation documents that are provided by other companies that are out there that are, that the board could consider. Ultimately, the board has elected the evaluation instrument, which the current instrument is also in the packet and it's been being used as well, I don't know, well, many years it's been. So without further ado.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate the introduction. Thanks for having me. I am Scott Corba. I work at Collins and Blaha PC, a law, a law firm in Southeast Michigan. We're located in Farmington Hills technically. And we've been practicing in the field of education law for many years, 30-plus years. My understanding is you currently use the superintendent evaluation tool that my office helped develop and are considering a move to the administrator tool, which is more or less aligned with the superintendent evaluation tool, very similar in a lot of ways. So my inclination, I've been asked to provide, you know, 10, 10-minute overview of the evaluation tool. So my inclination is to go through the one-page outline shown on the screen and I think you were provided those before. I also included the full training presentation that we do, required by law, for administrators who are being evaluated as well as those who are performing the evaluations. That's a longer PowerPoint and, you know, certainly if you need more detail, you could consult that or I could address questions on that as well. So in terms of, I'll just kind of get right into it. By all means, if you have questions, let me know throughout the, you know, quick overview. So back in 2015, when there was kind of an overhaul of administrator and teacher evaluations in the state, my law firm got a whole bunch of feedback from our clients, primarily throughout Southeast Michigan, raising a number of concerns that, oh, I should say, specific to the administrator evaluation tools that were available, the off-the-shelf tools developed by these, you know, large organizations, expressing various concerns. We have some of them outlined there, you know, concerns that they're overcomplicated. There's too many domains, subdomains, individual line items that you have to go through to complete the evaluation, that it was kind of a one-size-fits-all approach that was kind of too inflexible to apply to individual districts and their needs, as well as most of these tools had a numerical approach, which is, you know, can sometimes lead to skewed results and not necessarily provide the feedback that you're looking to provide during an evaluation. And then a very practical concern, lengthy training sessions for five-plus hours on the weekends where, you know, you're going over everything and, and, you know, perhaps too great a detail and kind of getting burned out on the whole thing. So as I said, we, we worked with clients primarily in Macomb County. It wasn't just a bunch of attorneys sitting around in a boardroom that developed this. We worked with basically board members, superintendents, administrators across the board, trying to develop a tool that was, that would solve some of these issues. And ultimately, what we came up with is something that, you know, 100-plus school districts, I believe, are using this tool, most of which are using the superintendent tool as well as the administrator tool. As I said, they're aligned and that can certainly make the process easier. And we've gotten good feedback and, you know, some of them are, some of the feedback we received is outlined there. But it's overall, it's simpler, easier, easier to understand. It provides some key areas that need to be evaluated, but also flexibility within those areas to apply to an individual administrator in their particular position, given their responsibilities, which is gonna vary from district to district, and limited calculations. Like the superintendent evaluation tool that you've been using, all we ask is that you provide ratings at the, at the high level, that domain or component level, rather than getting into each individual line item, assigning a numerical value or checking a box or whatever it is, indicating that it's, it's something you've observed. And then streamline training sessions as well, training sessions that typically last one to one and a half hours. Like I said, it's, the feedback has been positive. Districts seem to like it as a way to align with the superintendent evaluation tool, as well as to solve some of those key concerns that we identified and, and ultimately provide good feedback to the administrators being evaluated. The next couple of sections talk about what the work we put into. The statute, in the revised school code, I should say, it specifies that you have to satisfy a whole bunch of research-based validity, efficacy, things like that, in order to use a locally developed tool. We did that here. We put in all that work, again, similar to the superintendent tool that you're probably more familiar with. We performed a 50-state review of other administrator evaluation tools out there. We've reviewed a whole bunch of education research underlying those tools. One of the things we found was that all of those tools were ultimately aligned back to these professional standards for education leaders. Those are formerly the ISLEC standards for, for those of you who've been working in education for, you know, quite some time. And ultimately, what we end up with was a, a tool that is field-tested, it's based on rubrics and, and kind of more general concepts from other states. It's aligned with underlying education research and it's aligned with those professional standards. So in terms of, I mentioned, we had those 10 professional standards. We worked those down into six domains, much like the superintendent evaluation tool that you, that you're currently using. The, those categories, those six domains, there's some overlap. Same general concepts is what you're dealing with, with, with the superintendent, just kind of different phraseology, different names. Some are very similar. Professional growth and learning, looking at the growth and improvement and efforts to improve for the administrator, as well as kind of bringing those around them, their colleagues with them. Organizational management, which is one area that you consider as part of your superintendent evaluation. School planning and progress, you know, looking at identifying goals, using data to inform goals and achieving those goals, setting new goals in areas for improvement, whether at the school level for building administrators or at the central office level. School culture, which is fairly straightforward, you know, creating a positive working and learning environment for those around you. Professional qualities and instructional leadership, which really looks at, you know, an overall view of leadership and, you know, also the kind of key, and one key aspect of being a building or often a central office administrator, which is performing evaluations of teachers within the building. And then stakeholder support and engagement, which is very similar to the concept of community relations, which is one of the areas you rate the superintendent in. The primary difference aside from some of the different names for those domains is how the process is actually implemented. Of course, you as a board are not performing these evaluations. These are done either by the superintendent or another administrator, so someone in the central office or perhaps the, you know, building level administrator, depending on how, you know, you guys organize things. And, and as I said, we, we try to provide a certain amount of flexibility to apply to individual schools and administrators, provide good feedback ideally, which is, you know, ultimately the goal of these evaluations. The biggest thing that sets our tool apart from some of the other tools, aside from just the general feedback we've received about it being easier to understand, easier to implement, is the whole not going through the individual line items, assigning effectiveness ratings at the component level or the domain level, which again, I think is a concept you're probably familiar with in the superintendent evaluation tool. And of course, ultimately, you know, the evaluations have to be completed on a yearly basis. There are some, a few minor exceptions and, and the evaluation, you know, overall rating has to be then reported to the state. That's kind of a quick 10,000-foot overview. If you guys have questions, certainly, I am open to those at this point.
Do you, do you provide training to the administrators, to the people who are evaluating?
Both, yeah. The short answer is both.
So pending board approval, obviously you have to approve the instrument. We have tentatively set up dates in August to do not only the training for Ms. Era and I, who are administering more of this era, but also the administrators to work through the evaluation and learn it and see, kind of set those targets together. So that is tentatively on the books until, obviously we gotta have a board approval.
So is there, in, so being used to the evaluation, is there examples of what does this mean? What does highly effective mean? What does effective mean? Is there examples so that when we do present this to our administrators, they know what they're reaching at or what they're, they're going for? Either one.
The beauty, the beauty of this instrument, at least from my angle, is it allows us to, as a district, to set that target. If you look at the previous, or the current evaluation, it's very specific. In order to be highly effective, you have to meet that lane. And Deb, you know.
I know, that's why I'm asking.
I have said for seven years, I do not like this evaluation. So when this one came around, and they first did the superintendent and then came and did the building administrator, the, part of that training is for Ms. Era and I to sit down and say, "Okay, this is what it is. What's the target that we're all shooting for? So as a collective group, we all agree, this is what we're looking to measure." So that there's no surprises, there's nothing like that there. It's clearly articulated. It could be different, that target for an elementary versus a high school because of the nature of the building. Community relations might look different, but it's the idea within that training to sit down and say, "Okay, this is what we're looking for." And that's part of that process.
So would Christie, be on it?
Oh, absolutely. Because what it looks like for central office for her is gonna be different than necessarily for.
Chris Reinhardt, he would be on it?
Yes.
Okay, so those, those would be directed differently. When you sit down with those individuals, it might look different versus Andy's.
Correct, correct.
Exactly. And to echo some of that, the intention behind, behind the tool is to provide these larger categories. And then we certainly provide even on the tool itself, some guideposts and things that you, you know, should probably be considering under use of these categories, but we don't require the evaluator to go line by line and say, you know, "Have I seen this particular behavior?" Because the feedback we receive from, from districts is those behaviors may be appropriate to take into account for some administrators, but not others, and may be within the duties of one assistant principal and not another assistant principal. And so we try to provide the, you know, the framework, but also flexibility within that framework to apply to a particular position, to a particular school at any given time. framework to apply to a particular position, to a particular school at any given time.
And you're looking at that broader category where the current one, you're literally.
I know.
Line item each item. And there are some that, that, okay, I'm, we try to figure, how does this fit on a dean of student versus a principal or for Christie? It's a struggle. And so that's the nice part, and that's why I think so many districts have moved towards this evaluation, because it allows you the ability to meet the needs of the individual district.
Is it electronic?
Um, yeah, we can, you know, provide it in electronic, fillable form, basically.
So basically this, what you have, what you gave us, this is the administrative version of the superintendent evaluation we currently have, bottom line?
Yes.
That's all I need to do for me. I mean, if it lines up, that's what we want. But I just know that from my standpoint, I've been under the old evaluation tool, this is a lot better than what we were using.
I would agree with you.
So then I guess, well, I'll wait until your, this question has to do with teacher evaluations. I know we have specific things we have to follow, all of that. Is there any, any review of that? Is that something?
We have had conversations, or at least I've had them with administrators, I don't know if it's era, has that regarding the actual tool. That would be our next review.
Okay.
Just to look at that, because there are some other teachers. Now, correct or wrong, there's no teacher evaluation from Colin to blah.
No, we have not.
So that would be something that's not directly aligned, but we're trying to get to that, that big picture, that level. Because, you know, it, again, when you look at the individual, it is so hard to say, I didn't see any evidence of it and I got to mark you here, and it really isn't fair to mark a person there. And now one of the questions, I don't remember when we were, one of the meetings was regarding, you know, ratings of effective and highly effective. This allows us to truly actively measure an administrator with what they are doing in their back building.
Anybody else have any other questions? So then is the idea, in two weeks, this will be?
In two weeks, this will be an action, a form to approve the switching of or change of the evaluation tool. Because then that will give us the time, assuming the board approves it, to put the postings we have to do online and all the legal stuff we have to do, as well as lock in now the training that we have tentatively discovered.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for having me. And certainly any other questions, you can go through the superintendent or Ms. Aron.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item on our agenda is our instructional spotlight, K-12 Social Studies curriculum.
I'm going to warn you guys, she is very excited.
I am so excited. But aren't I always excited?
You are, you are.
All right, so I am going to be presenting today on our social studies. So in 2017, Michigan adopted new social studies framework, specifically the C3 framework of the Arch of Inquiry. It goes along similarly to the science in which it's all, you know, phenomena inquiry based. You can see the different levels of the dimensions. Dimension one, developing questions and planning inquiries. Dimension two, applying disciplinary concepts and tools. Dimension three, evaluating sources and using evidence. Dimension four, communicating conclusions and taking informed action. It's really kind of like, you know, the OK, it's about how deep you're going to go and specifically how you're going to use those critical concepts of social studies in order to express yourself. The C3 framework, Arch of Inquiry, you can see the different dimensions here. The P2 and P1 and P3, those, and when you are first reading the social study standards, people might just go right through those. So those are, if you actually take a look and look at them, they're actually extremely important. In fact, those are the way that the students are going to be asked in order to show what they know. So this is truly a piece of document that we really need to spend a lot of time with. You can see in our implementation plan, we're going to spend a lot of time with this. The new social study standards really makes you show your knowledge in very different ways. So we need curriculum that's going to be able to do that for our students. You can see the sequence of study here, K-12. There was really not a lot of difference as far as the critical, the content expectations are what the social study standards are specifically called. The main difference was in grade six and seven. There was more of an integration in geography in grade seven from grade six as well. And here is a K2 overview. These are what you call content expectations. So you can see that just their overall themes, first grade, family and school, second grade, the local community. And then of course you have your breaking out of your domains within social studies, which is your history, your geography, your civics and government, your economics, and then your public discourse, decision-making, which goes along with that C3 framework.
It's a lot for K2, right?
We have questions so far. Our third through fifth grade overview. Third grade focuses on Michigan studies, fourth grade, U.S. studies, fifth grade, integrated U.S. history. Then once again, they still have their pillars. Sixth through eighth grade. Once again, we really didn't see a lot of change from the old standards in 2010 to the shift in 2017, just a little bit that they're adding more geography in grade seven. Grades nine through 12, these are where we earn our credits, world history, geography, U.S. history and geography, civics, and economics. So I had the privilege of being able to meet with every single teacher in the district that is involved in teaching social studies. We were able to meet and we went through the current scope and sequences analysis. We went through our new, our understanding of the new social study standards and where they were at with all of that. I got to hear about what they wanted out of their curriculum. The K5 really wanted program that was aligned to the new standards, that had a digital component, because we don't really know what next year is also going to look like in this year and all, every, you know, what everybody's had to do in order to adopt the curriculum and instruction for this year. They wanted to get away from another basal, you know, and something similar that they're currently using. They wanted something with a lot of visuals, specifically with maps, helping kids understand that visual comprehension. Teachers at the sixth through 12th grade wanted a program that aligned to the new social study standards, had strong visual representation of content, had appropriate text complexity. In fact, that was their main reason why they chose Networks versus other programs that they actually did view, was because of the text complexity that was far more superior in this specific program than others. They sampled each and didn't say anything, but middle school and high school both said that they liked the one together. You know how rare that is? So the two programs that I'm asking for approval is Studies Weekly for K5 and McGraw-Hill Networks. The Studies Weekly is in a newspaper format where every single student in K5, every single week, will get their own physical newspaper that is aligned to the social studies content. It has a digital component, which can also read to them. They just click this little play button and this little turtle represents how fast or how slow it can read it to them. Great adaptability for students with special needs, for students that are ELO, that are learning English. It does allow them to highlight, make annotation. You see the little word icon here, very similar to what they're asked to do on the M-Step and Other State Assessments. It comes along with vocabulary builders, graphic organizers that are fillable. It comes with content videos and virtual field trips. So not only will they have their own physical newspaper every single week, they will also have their own digital portion for the curriculum online as well. So they'll all have their own separate accounts. It can link right to their school log in. I know there's a picture of Google Classroom, but it can go right in the school log in. And I will let you go ahead and read those. Those are our teachers talking about this program. I also was able to give each of the K5 teachers access to the digital component, so they had time to be able to really go into what that would look like. The next proposed curriculum and program is the Networks from McGraw-Hill. One of my absolute favorite things that I've seen is that teachers get to select a path in which they teach. This specific program allows teachers to have the teacher-directed path, the inquiry path, or the project path. Can be separated by student, can be separated by class, however the teacher feels that student is best going to learn that content. It's one of the neatest things I've seen a program do. The, you can see just the preview of what it comes with. It also comes with an online component. It has interactive maps, so that they can actually zoom in, look at the maps, be able to really get that geography. It comes with primary source activities. It comes along with the vocabulary. They can click on the word and they can hear it, what it means. It does read it to them again, and it has the annotated notes. So if we were to go with this product, every single student would have a class set, sixth through 12, as well as have their own access to Learn Smart, which is the digital component. Everything is editable, the assessments, the scopes, teachers are going to be able to have full control of how that program is given to students. And here's teacher voices from sixth, 12. So we know that there is no magical program that's going to teach students to the best. It takes teachers to do that, and Richmond has the best teachers. So here, you can see a yearly plan that I have created for Richmond for the implementation and establishment of universal program guidelines. Eventually I'd like to get to the point where each program has one of these in use. You can see how we're going to evaluate the components of the program, as well as the year-one plan. So this is a way that we are able to supply a program for teachers and support them as we are aligning it, as we are editing our assessments. We are creating it, we're all sitting down, we're talking about the critical components of the program. We are creating the gold standards of implementation. We are talking about the acceptable variations of implementation. And this is our curriculum. It's ours that we will own. You can see year-two implementation and then year-three, when it becomes the universal usage guidelines. So that any new teacher to the district will have this universal usage guide for this program, specifically for Richmond. And you can see same thing with McGraw-Hill, only some of the difference is the student's success criteria. Year-three does lend itself to be able to do the, go through the MDE program evaluation tool, so that we can, of course, ultimately see the impact on student achievement. Pricing. So typically the Studies Weekly ran about $7.95 per student. You can see the cost breakdown per grade. This would be a yearly cost to be able to keep having these newspapers sent. And Networks, you can see the price breakdown. They gave us a lovely deal, so you can see that's why grade six looks a little different. So each, each student, grades six through 12, they will have a class hard copy set of the textbook, as well as each student will have their own digital access for six years. So if you consider this price over six years, it runs about $13,000 per year, which is actually relatively inexpensive for what we're getting in this quality program. Does anybody have any questions?
I will say the original price was significantly higher, when they went to work, getting her negotiation skills and was able to get significantly reduced. So I am very much appreciative of that. In the budget, as you, just as a point of reference, as we start building, there is currently a line item in the budget that we pay for it this year. So that is why I'm asking for your approval tonight. Normally that would be a two-week window, because we need to have it ordered and the stuff, the stuff that we're actually getting here by June 30. As items that are yearly, there will be a second line item in the budget that we moved that $5,400 to, so that it's built in every year that we can sustain this program every year. So it's a little different than we've done in the past, trying to make sure that we accommodate those annual costs. I'm very excited, the conversations, I've been, I was at a couple of the sessions that you had to teach, the conversation really is of excitement and of trying to get their students into deep conversations about social studies content that I handle a lot of.
I just want to say that I am so happy we are doing this, because those are the oldest books. And at least I know the high school. So this is really, really a nice improvement. We know.
Thank you. And the resources are in the back, so after the board meeting, if you didn't get a chance before, they will be there if you want to come in. Just let us know, we can arrange that for any board meeting.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, next item, 2022 Budget Projection. Mr. Holmes.
All right, so we have been talking about the budget for a couple of weeks now. There's a couple of new pieces that we know. Tammy's going to begin talking about the millage rate that we have to approve so that we can allow the municipalities, the cities, the towns to be able to issue tax bills for the July 1 tax bill. We're also going to talk about the headly millage rollback, which is going to affect us, as well as of the 21 districts, at least 17 of the 21 districts are affected with this headly rollback. So I'll start with Tammy, if you want to.
Yes, each year, in order to run our budget, we have to levy operating millage for the general fund and debt millage for the debt fund to prepay our bonds. So there is a form that we do after we receive our tax values through Macomb ISD and FCA Macomb County Equalization and St. Park County Equalization, because we have some properties in both counties. In your packet is a copy of the L4029, and it basically lays out our taxable value for all properties is 578, now you hold that number, 578, 422,794. That's all properties, and that's what our debt funds or our debt levy is assessed on all properties. For the operating residents, we are only able to use the non-residential, non-agricultural properties. And that taxable value for 2021 is 164,990,028. The county does the calculation based on current, what the 20, how the 2021 taxable value is compared to the 2020 taxable values. And if those increases are higher than the rate of inflation, then we get a, what's called a millage reduction fraction, and it's either one, or it's less than one. In our case this year, like 21 other, other board districts in the county, we have a rollback, because ours is less than one. So if we look at that form, the top line has our operating millage on it, and we, our orders approved back in 2016, the operating mills have 18 mills. If we apply the millage reduction fraction, which is .9958, we end up levying 17.9244 mills. Now what happens is the state assumes we're collecting the full 18, but we wouldn't, we aren't able to collect the full 18, so we lose the difference. And for this year, it's about $12,500. And it's the first year we've been affected by it since it was approved in 2016. But next year, and every year forward until it's renewed, or we would do an override vote, we start at 17.9244. we start at 17.9244, apply the millage reduction fraction, so that amount of loss can increase each year, depending on how the values go up, and how much that millage fraction, reduction fraction reduces us. But for now, we're at $12,500, that leaves me. And then the rest of that form has our debt, different debt levies on it, that were approved in 96, 2013, 2007, and 2019. And in total, for debt, we would be at 6.95 mills.
So just to recap, the state assumes that you're levying 18 mills, and that's where we get the total per pupil, the calculation, et cetera. Because of the rate of inflation and the values of our house, the values exceeding rate of inflation, they're reducing what we can levy. So going forward, we cannot levy 18 mills, the most we can levy is a 17.92. Unless we go to the voters and say, "We would like a headly override," to say, "The voters say we're going to go beyond that and levy the 18 mills." We're not recommending us to do that. The $12,500 or something, we would believe that we can, we can absorb in the budget. Now, we're never, we will never levy the 18 again, until, again, we get that back approved. So we just have to watch that, that headly override, or the millage reduction that happened this year. As Tammy said, and I mentioned, of the 21 districts, there are only four districts that were not affected. Every other district has a headly rollback on their military. Any questions on the military? So later today, you'll be asked to approve this, so that we can send this to the townships and cities, so they can issue the tax bills to the residents. In your packet, you got the budget discussion. We included the assumptions on revenue, and as Tammy has highlighted there, it's $12,475. At this point, we still do not know our per pupil allocation. We are assuming $100 per pupil as our foundation that we built the budget on. I'm just going to kind of go through. Also in your packet, you'll see an updated summary of the accounts and the line items that look like this. We did not print the line items, the accounts that will come at the next board meeting, but you will see on the page three, that we are at this point, our expenses are less than revenue, excuse me, our revenue exceeds expenses by approximately $34,000.
That's the change, right? It's $20,000.
I'm sorry, you're right, that's the 20, $20,000. Thank you. All right, so the next items are the items that were requested by the board members. The first one is art and music. There was a discussion at the last board meeting about cost, and so, did they have enough supplies, et cetera. So I tried to capture what the conversation was, and I hope that the questions that I posed them. So here you have the responses from each of the art teachers and music teachers who responded. There are some that, that we do charge some students with books, there are some that we bought them several years ago. They are starting to be worn, that we're going to need to look at, which will be part of the curriculum process. There are some fees that are paid. One of them was the, there's 110 that are paid to the band boosters at the high school, 30 of that is to maintain and clean the required uniforms. The rest begins to cover the clinicians and the band camp, and the band camp instructors that are at the band camp, food, water throughout marching band season, et cetera. Part of the money that the boosters raise also helps pay for uniforms, et cetera. There are some fees that we've eliminated in this past approval of the course catalog at the high school, some fees that we did with some of the art courses. We now have a line item budget for those courses, so that we won't be charging those fees. But this will give you, there are some, there's one of the questions, is there something that you do not teach because of cost? Ceramics has been with a large conversation. Now that we are putting the film in the middle school with the two-art renovation, we'll be reviewing that budget going forward and seeing what we need to put in for ceramics to support that program. The second item that I put on there is athletic turf. We asked Dan Jerome, who's our architect, to work with Forsight Design, who, they're the company that designed the field. Because most of the infrastructure was put in, you can see in the backup, that it's about $450,000 to replace the actual grass, another $10,000 around year six, to replace some of the rubberized pellets that, just through wear and tear, just get stuck to uniforms and won't wear off, and so we need to replenish it. So, for the first year, because we, looking at a 10-year cycle, you can actually, 10 years is kind of probably the most conservative view on replacing, depending on the usage of the field. You could possibly get, you know, 12 to 13 years, if you wanted to spread that, more is being used, et cetera. So we built it on a 10-year. So if we wanted to start setting aside money now, we would need to about $52,000 a year, and the next year, 51, for the next remaining seven years. You can see there's expenses of $10,000 in year six, and $450,000 to replace the actual field. This is assumed, this is in today's dollars, so it's not projected what that $450 might be in 10 years. Again, I don't know inflation or index, et cetera, but, but at least it starts putting the dollars aside. This is also assuming the infrastructure that was put in doesn't need to be replaced. This is just the field turf, not the drainage system and all that that's there. The next chart you have is the bus replacement. You'll see that we currently build buses on a 14-year cycle. So basically, our buses run for 10 years, and then we keep them for two years for spares. Currently, our oldest bus that we have in the fleet right now is 2008. That is scheduled to be replaced. The bus is on order, it's due any day. So next year, in '22 budget, in '23 budget, we do not have any funds allocated for bus replacements. So we purchased the five, or the, excuse me, the four buses out of the bond, because we had to replace some buses sooner. So we've done the first four as Series 1. The next one that we replace is when we sell Series 3, or 2, formerly Series 3, and we'll replace another bus in 2024. So to keep on this bus replacement, we would need to set aside, it's about $100,000 for a bus. And you can see on the, for the fiscal year '22, fiscal year '23, we'd have to set aside $100,000 each year. Once you build it into the budget, then unless you withdraw it, or remove it, it then rolls over each year, and we keep it in there. You'll see in 2024, we use bond funds, and then we're back to general fund. And we'd be able to get on a replacement cycle of basically a bus a year, and keeping a bus for 14 years. On the back of that page, you'll see the laptop replacement, because that's the, you can see on this one, it's a little different layout. In FY '16 was our major purchase, in the 2014 bond series. In FY '20, we purchased five to eight laptops in the 2018 bond series, this is Series 2. In FY '20, you'll see that we purchased money using the CARES Act, after $2, some of the funds there. To begin getting on a replacement cycle of about every five years, when you look at this schedule, you start, for this first round, you'd have to allocate about $80,400 per year. And the reason why that's less than on this first one is because there's a placeholder of about $300,000 to be paid in 2024 of that Series 3 bond, at that point. So, once the bond dollars are exhausted, then you'd approximately be at $192,000. This assumed a slight increase in enrollment at each grade level, and assumes a slight increase in the cost of the computer in the future, or the laptop in the future. And this cost is primarily your total cost, which would be bags, cases, et cetera, that we're trying to target. Again, it's an estimate. With that, there is one that I still have, I'm working on, is the actual computers, which is the labs, which we just replaced this summer. All the labs will, and all the teacher computers, all the office computers, will all be upgraded this summer, so we will have about five more years. So I will be getting that, that others, there are some pickups that I couldn't figure out some of the costs that I had to. But the big ticket item, the ones that are going to be the most impact for the student, particularly on the laptops, would be the one that I would recommend the board consider if you're going to put dollars aside. So at this time, if the, if the board doesn't have any other discussions on the budget, you know, if you want to, if you want to set aside dollars, we will be looking at taking dollars out of fund equity to set it aside, or allocating dollars. If you want to make that a priority, once the final per pupil allocation is given. The state, you know, you've seen a lot of the governor's new budget out there, it's very friendly to Richmond schools, but it's through a negotiated process, we don't know whether to do that. The last I had heard, they told us not to expect anything until July. In fact, there was actually a bill in the injuries to waive the June 30 approval date. So the budget you would have to approve is based on a lot of assumptions, which is what that chart is. Any other questions on, on the budget aspect?
Just going back to the questions about art and music, and Angela, that was something when we discussed, when I brought up about the pay-to-play, and you were concerned about not doing things for athletics, doing it for academics. Does this answer your questions? I mean, I guess I'm looking, I don't see what you were saying. Are you seeing what you were saying in these answers?
Absolutely. I think there definitely needs to be an increase in both of those programs. I think sometimes people tend to forget that boosters are fundraisers raised by parents and students. So us parents and students, even if it is through a band booster, most of that money comes through parents and the community still. Throughout it, it looked like there was maybe about $1,500, or it seemed like a smaller line item, but without having our figures currently in from the state, and from the, you know, to us, I was hoping to, I'm not ready to yet, I guess, do any major, you know, spend any extra money than needed. Till we get the final numbers. I'm good with what we currently have, but I would like, like you said, after we get our final numbers, to maybe look back. Okay, but my question was, you were saying we weren't providing, I never said we weren't providing. What I said is, if we have extra money in the budget, I would like to see it go to graded curriculum before athletics.
Okay, okay. I don't, I'm not sure that's what you said, but, but this answer is acceptable.
The answer to my question, I see, yes, we do definitely need more funding in both programs, but I'm not sure I'm ready to put more funding until after we get our final numbers.
So, then, the conversation that, I've been talking about the, about the pay-to-play and all of that, that you're saying we could, that's still a discussion we want to have as the board, but we don't want to have it until after we know what our funding is going to be, and is that what you're saying? Yes.
That's kind of Margaret where I'd like to stay, and I only say that because, after Brian just showed us all those figures for the buses, for the, you know, for the turf, or the laptops, I'd like to know what those numbers are before I really commit to take stuff away from that, from the pay-to-play. I would like to wait. I'm not comfortable right now moving or cutting anything until we have those figures. That's just my feeling.
Yeah, I don't have any problem. I just want to know that the conversation's still there, because we talked about the art and music, and, and it was, wanted to do something academics rather than athletics. So I'm just making sure, are we still going to, because it's not part of, and I know, I know Brian's still reporting.
I'm okay with it still being there. What's that? I'm okay with it still being there.
Okay.
I don't know about the rest of the board, but I'm okay with it being there. I just want to make, I want to see some more solid numbers. I want to know what the state, what we're going to get from the state.
Okay.
Do you do amendments in October?
We do amendments in October?
We did that last year, when the state finally approved the budget, when it was end of July, August. We came back to you in September, October, and shortly thereafter, amended the budget because it was very different than what they were telling us in June, or what they were asking us to do.
I feel comfortable waiting till then also, and just leaving things as they are.
Adding, are we going to add in these turf and computer and bus costs, though? Right.
That'll be conversation in August, is what you're saying?
Well.
All this stuff here, that we just talked about.
You mean the turf and everything?
Right, I mean, that's what you're saying, waiting?
Or are we going to add that in now?
Because then we'll know by then what the state's given us, and then hopefully, we're going to have more money, so we'll be able to put stuff away, or put some accounts for some of those items that we know we're going to need down the road.
Absolutely.
But she is, we're not doing it now.
No.
That's what we're saying as a board.
So we're agreeing to, we are not touching it now.
We would keep the budget how it was presented, it was currently correct, without adding that extra, so far, with the $36,000.
Correct. So Brian, so Brian right now.
Can we edit it now, or can we edit it now without being?
Well, then where are you going to have the money? Because we don't have enough money in the budget to add them.
Right.
You have $20,000 right now budget, the revenue exceeds.
All right, I just wanted to make sure I understand that correctly.
So, once you get the final numbers from the state, I'm going to make an assumption you're getting more than $100 per pupil, but what that is, we don't know. That will change your revenue, and at that point, you're going to have to allocate where we want, where you want to have those dollars.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding.
You're good with the budget, then?
We're good with it, yes.
So Tammy and I will finalize the budget, make sure all the line items, and get everything in, so for the next board meeting. Which is to remember, there's two board meetings next time. There's a sixth year special, because we have to do a truth in budgeting meeting, and then do the regular ones. Okay.
Okay. At this time, I need a motion to go into closed session.
I move for section 88 of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, that the Board of Education will in a closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute.
Do I have a support?
Support.
Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Angela?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Motion carries. The board's going to go into closed session at 8:27. Open session at 9:02. Okay, our next section is public comments. Before we open it up to public comments today, I will take full responsibility for this. Last meeting, I had three emails that I did not share, and I did not realize that I needed to, so I'm taking that responsibility, and I'm going to read them tonight. The first email is from Teresa D. Bog. Says, "Hi, first, I want to truly thank you for all you do for our district. Being a board member is a calling. A normal school year poses a number of obstacles, and this past 15 months has been anything but normal. I have done my fair share of bragging about how well our district has operated, considering current events. For that, I thank you. With the governor's latest COVID update, it sounds like all restrictions will be lifted as of July 1, 2021, including Michigan's mask mandate. I am really hoping that this means that Michigan schools and Richmond Community Schools will be able to lift the mask mandate for the 2122 school year. My daughter is at the middle school, has struggled wearing her mask this year. It has just brought her down. I am not disregarding the seriousness of the virus. I experienced it firsthand. I understand that you and the state were making decisions during a, though I hate the words, unprecedented time. I am worried that schools will continue the mask requirement even with the mandate lifted. I hope and pray that Richmond Community Schools will continue, will discontinue the mask requirement for the upcoming school year. Another concern that I have is that the COVID vaccine will become a requirement for students of age. So many, so many ideas are circulating through talk and media. Many believe that public schools will try to require such a thing. I strongly urge the Richmond Community School Board to stand against such requirements. Thank you for your time, not just the time you put into reading this message, but the time you put into our schools. You are appreciated, and I look forward to learning about the district's plans for the next school year." The next email is from Darla Stice. There are some concerns I would like "There are some concerns I would like to address at the upcoming board meeting. I have two children in the middle school and to say this year has been a challenge is an understatement. With the 21-22 school year ahead of us, I feel very strongly that we need to restore normalcy for our children. The CDC shows that children account for only 10% of all cases of COVID and most of these children are asymptomatic. We know that COVID does not pose any more of a risk to our children than the flu. It has been shown that children rarely transmit the virus to others. Despite the extremely low risk to children, they are the ones that have suffered the most with all of the COVID restrictions and mandates. Less than 1% of children or staff that have been quarantined due to close contact have actually ended up testing positive for COVID. The school has had to go virtual for weeks at a time due to staff shortages that has caused. My children struggle with virtual, as I'm sure many children do. Their grades fall, they get behind in assignments, their mood changes due to lack of socialization. Getting them back on track takes weeks, if not months. The mask mandate should be eliminated whether a child is vaccinated or not. Parents should have the choice if they want their children to wear masks or not. Other school districts of Michigan have already taken this initiative and Richmond should follow. Thank you for your time." And then I have another one. "Dear Mr. Walmsley and the Board of School, we, the parents and guardians who are committed to the well-being of our children, are grateful for your leadership during this difficult past school year. We know you were faced with many tough decisions and appreciate you doing your best to guide our families through this process. With the 21-22 school year ahead of us, we now ask you to bravely build on that leadership by lifting the mask mandate on our children this upcoming school year and allow parents to have a choice as to mask or not mask their children. The science is clear that children are not the drivers of transmission of COVID-19. Current CDC data shows that children ages 17 and under account for only 10% of cases and most of these children are asymptomatic. Therefore, we would expect to see limited transmission from children to adults. There are also documented physiological and psychological effects of masks on children. According to the British Medical Journal, face masks can provoke an increase in stress hormones with a negative impact on immune resilience in the long term. Face masks prevent the mirroring of facial expressions, a process that facilitates empathetic connections and trust between pupils and teachers. That potentially leads to a significant increase in social psychological stress. The last few weeks, as the weather has been getting warmer, my daughter Myla has been coming home with headaches daily, complaining of nauseous and feeling that it's hard to breathe with the mask on. We, as parents, should have a choice whether or not to mask our children, the same way that we have a choice to vaccinate them, allow them to play sports, decide which pediatrician to use, which school to attend, et cetera. We feel very strongly that our freedoms are being restricted at the expense of our children. We have stood by and done our best to support virtual learning when needed and have been compliant with all the screenings necessary to ensure the safety of our children and your staff, but now we must move forward. The vaccine is available to anyone over 16 years of age in the state of Michigan that would like to receive it. Therefore, there should be no reason that parents out of good faith can determine if they want their children to wear a mask or not in the school setting. Furthermore, mandating a mask is in direct violation of the state of Michigan's school code policy, which explicitly prohibits any restraint that negatively impacts breathing. Mask used for viral transmission prevention is authorized for emergency use only. Emergency use authorization by the FDA means the products are investigational and experimental only. The statute granting the FDA the power to authorize a medical product of emergency use requires that the person being administered the unapproved product be advised of his or her right to refuse administration of the product. As the guardians of our children, we are submitting this letter as a formal refusal to the administration of a mask. We are urging the board members to do what is right and in the best interest of each individual student and lift this mandate for the 21-22 school year." And then I have one more that I received today. "Good evening, board members. My name is Shelby Paul. I have a child that attends the elementary school and will be in second grade next school year, hopefully as long as the district goes back to normal instruction year minus masks and mandatory vaccines. I'm writing this email to address my concerns regarding the letter sent home by Superintendent Walmsley. I'm very concerned why the district is sponsoring a vaccine clinic, June 19, 2021, for students, staff and the community, along with the EMS company in our city. Why are we having to contact the secretary of the director of students to book appointments instead of the EMS company that has been holding vaccine clinics for months? Who is paying for students, staff and the community who want this? Our money for our district should be going to our students for education or sports, not untested vaccines. Why is our superintendent pushing for our students to be vaccinated with a vaccine that is untested for long-term effects and short-term effects? Why is our superintendent saying if we want to have a normal year next year? As a parent, I am not thrilled at all with our district. My child has had to go through that entire school year with masks and abnormal learning environment. My child's education has suffered and is now lagging. My child's mental health, along with others in the district, has taken a roller coaster far from normalcy and all my child would like to do is see his friend at school like normal, play with his friends like normal, see his teacher's face like normal, and yet our district is still following orders given by our governor that we deem unconstitutional. Then when us parents ask what will happen, the district states it just depends on what happens with funding. So is the school district of Richmond going to extort our children for funding? If Richmond Community Schools cannot do what's best for its students and stay out of the way of parents being parents and making medical choices for our children, I, among others in our district, will pull our students from the district. Now, I would like to thank you for reading my email and please understand where I, as a parent, it's coming from. And if you could please answer my questions and address my concerns, I would greatly appreciate it. Please see that us parents are trying to work with the district to have a great school year next year and at the same time, we are trying to do what's best for our children. Thank you for your time." Okay, at this time, it is public comments. If there is any member in the audience who wishes to address the board, please step forward to the podium, state your name and you will have three minutes.
My name, oop, I want to make sure it's on. Watching, I know. Am I on? No. Am I on?
Nope, I don't even see it lit up.
Am I on?
Oh, yes.
Okay, there we go. All right. So I'll start my three minutes. My name's Preston Trent. I'm a teacher and coach here at the high school. I'm representing a coalition of coaches who have met recently to discuss our concerns over the recent district policy regarding Schedule B athletic positions and the requirement of returning coaches to formally interview for their positions. We'd like the board to review this policy and see if we could come to a resolution for it that will benefit our kids. I know we've talked about this a little bit earlier today with a different line item, but we wanted to make sure we outlined our concerns as the Schedule B coaches. As I stated before, I am an REA member, but I'm representing also the non-REA member coaches that I work closely with. This issue really came up with the basketball position where Coach Presnell was required to interview for a position he was in and was effective in, simply because there was an REA member that applied for the position. So on the list, you'll see nine head varsity coaches who are not REA members and some of their accomplishments here at Richmond. You'll see state championship teams, state runner-up teams, regional championship teams, very quality programs, quality people, the kind of people we want our kids around and that we want to stay and work with our kids in the long term. All right? What we would like as coaches is this security to know that if we're doing a good job and we're rated as effective or highly effective each year as we're evaluated, that we will be allowed to return to the programs that many of us have built. We understand that athletics is an extension of the classroom and we, coaches, strive for that and we feel that's what makes us effective coaches. We also feel this sets a bad, we're on the verge of setting a bad precedent for the district and it really gives our district a bad, if this continues, could give our district a bad rep of, hey, you could be replaced, even if you win a couple state titles, just because somebody else applies. So we'd really like the district to consider either removing Schedule B from the collective bargaining agreement completely or putting provisions in there that if a coach is rated effective or highly effective, that they should be allowed to return to their position without having to be formally interviewed. We'd like to be a part of this discussion and we feel free, or please feel free to contact any of us listed below when that discussion arises. So thank you for your time. Three minutes exactly.
Thank you.
Okay. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Nick Mathis. I'm the current robotics head coach, as well as varsity football assistant, and just kind of wanted to echo what Mr. Trent stated earlier. So I'm just going to kind of start with a couple of the accolades that our coaches here at Richmond have. Kelly Mathis, who's been a coach for 13 years at Richmond, has 13 league championships, 13 BWAC Coach of the Years, eight county championships, five district championships, seven regional championships, five state runner-ups, five state championships, six districts Coach of the Year, four regional Coach of the Years, Competitive Cheer Coaches Association Coach of the Year, National Federation for High School Sports Sectional Coach of the Year from Minnesota, Indiana, Ohio and Illinois, and has 1,643 career wins in her record at Richmond. Howard Stewart has the ninth winningest coach before this year in softball in the Michigan High School Athletic Association with 1,043 wins. He's five appearances in the MHSA finalists and one state championship and is currently playing in a quarterfinal this year. Brandon Day, who with George Hamlin and Preston Trent have built a wrestling program that is voted ninth best program in the state of Michigan currently by Michigan Grappler and has since joined Richmond, has made the state tournament all but two years. Again, seven state championships, 16 district championships, 16 regional championships and numerous Coach of the Year awards. Scott Evans, who is currently playing in a baseball semifinal, on the verge of winning a state championship this year, also has two state runner-ups, multiple collegiate athletes among all these coaches, and has also just been recently inducted into the baseball Hall of Fame. I bringing this to you, board, as to echo what Mr. Trent said, that it's important to keep these proven coaches in Richmond here that we have that have all these accolades and I'm sure I missed some with some other sports, but just to highlight a few of that. We continue to give these coaches the security for the programs that they've built and continue to, excuse me, and continue to let them build upon those programs as long as they want to. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
My name is Candace Cunningham. Is this on? Okay. And I just want you guys to know that I absolutely had no intentions on even coming to this meeting tonight at all, based on my emotions after the last meeting that we had three weeks ago from all our mama there back there that expressed grave concerns in regards to the mask mandates for next year. Yet I got out of work today, checked my emails and sure enough, I have an email from Mr. Walmsley that basically is expressing doubled down to all of our concerns about masks, not only taking it from masks, but now talking about the vaccines, which is very concerning. I'm not sure why we're promoting that as a district on these children when it hasn't even been up to be approved yet. And not only that, I mean, nobody's taking into consideration the children that have already had COVID, that actually carry the immunizations within them already. And your letter was very, to all families, I mean, you didn't, it's just, it's very concerning that we're already here and it's only been three weeks. Last time I was here, we were just talking about masks. Now we're already at the vaccination level. I mean, what's to come? What's next? You know, the discriminating that if you don't have it, which was our biggest concern and why, I know we were all here talking three weeks ago, wanting to help you guys, wanting to be your supporters and how can we connect with other districts and try to be one identity and, you know, unite and so this type of discrimination isn't mandated. Monies aren't taken from us if you don't follow. So this was just very off-putting for me to read that today. I'm very sad about it. I'm really hoping that, you know, this isn't our future and then another three-week meeting, it's going to be something different. I'm really concerned and I know a lot of other people are too. It came to this point very fast and I'm just upset and it's bad. I mean, remember, just the term vaccine discrimination, I mean, it can be real. These children are already, I'm already hearing stories in the community where certain moms are saying, well, Johnny can't hang out with Suzie and, no, you can't get in my car and drive with Nisa here because you haven't been vaccinated. I mean, this is promoting that. This is already taking it there. So I don't know who has access to this information, you know, it's not calling the health department and it's not, doesn't seem very private to me when we're calling the school's health, whatever. I mean, who has access to this? So all just very concerning and a little bit more of information on your email would really be appreciated. So that's all. Thank you for your time.
Hi. As you guys know, I spoke at the last board meeting and I spent three hours today writing up what I wanted to say and now it's all switched up because I wanted to first, you know, go into, I'm happy to see that we're going to go back to school normal next year. My child has been virtual because I didn't want her in that environment, not normal. And I got all excited and then, and I was going to thank you guys and then as I'm writing this all out and expressing that I am still concerned for next year because, you know, what's going to happen at cold and flu season? Are we going to mask up our kids again? Because I'll pull my kid indefinitely. I'm done with it. And then I get the, I get the email today with the letter and one thing that stuck out and infuriated me was just below the link for the survey where it stated, if we want to help effort to keep things normal, we must consider getting children 12 and older vaccinated for COVID-19. You're going to tell me this isn't political? If it wasn't, we would be encouraging every vaccine in this way, not just this one. And now the district is partnering a vaccine clinic? Do you even partner vaccine clinics for the flu? People know where they need to go if they want to get the shot. Why would the school advocate for a shot we know nothing about? The shot is, one, not FDA-approved. Two, we have no idea the effects this will have on our children upon getting it or in the future. Three, we are not advocating for better diet, health with eating good and exercising. Why relying on an experimental shot that even once receiving it, you can still catch COVID and spread it? And four, and last, I'm going to be very blunt here and I'm going to say what others may be thinking and may be scared to say. When they come out and say, if you get a shot, you can have free beer and donuts, you can be entered into a cash-winning lottery, that's completely and totally insane and disturbing. And then if you don't see that that is, need your heads examined. They're offering free beer and donuts, food? The government is being pushed, pushed for this vaccine. Why? Why are we being bribed by our government to get something so badly? That rages huge red flags for me, huge, huge. And it should raise a huge flag for anybody that has any common sense and can can think for themselves. And now if we want to ensure normal in our school year, we are encouraged to get our children 12 and older vaccinated? Just seeing that today makes me question keeping our child in the Richmond schools. This vaccine is politically driven, and it's being used for control, and that statement in the email, as well as the clinic, proves it. I will end this. The power of one leads to the power of many. There might not be just me and a few others here tonight, but we are mighty. We are fighters, and we will not stop fighting for our children until they are safe from this political overreach, push agenda, and I'm not afraid to stand up and fight for what's right. And by the way, this is the list on the FDA for possible results coming from a vaccine. You want to push giving this to a 12-year-old enough? It's disgusting.
Before we continue, can I just have your name, please?
Amy Skyer.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ashley Marciel. Let me just scroll up here. So I was originally coming here today to show my support for the school board and the parents regarding our efforts to return to a normal school year this fall, but my attention was shifted after receiving an email from Mr. Walmsley regarding an upcoming vaccine clinic. His exact words in this email were, "To help the efforts of having a normal 2021-2022 school year, I encourage all families to consider getting their child 12 and older vaccinated prior to the 2021-2022 school year." What this implies is that if children do not get vaccinated, we may not have a normal school year. Is this the message that the whole board as a whole wants to send to the parents? After the last board meeting, I was feeling very hopeful that we had our school's support, but this push for the vaccine goes against everything that we are fighting for. I do not feel it is the school's place to be advocating for a vaccine, let alone one that is not even FDA-approved and has been recently shown to cause severe adverse reactions in children. I'll say it again, children are the least vulnerable to this virus, yet have been put the hardest, and now are being pushed to get the vaccine, and sadly, from our very own school. Why Richmond? I have not heard of any other schools in our area that are pushing for this vaccine, and I want to know why this decision was made from just two weeks ago, you were supporting us in our cause. I'm also a little frustrated that we were just called out in the audience for not wearing a mask. I do not want to be a hypocrite and walk in here and take a stand for my children to be maskless this fall and come in here wearing a mask. It is hypocritical of me. And I do not understand the logic here. In two weeks, the mask mandates are going to be lifted. What is going to change in two weeks from now on July 1st? What is so magical about this date? Everyone wants to be, everyone who wants to be vaccinated currently has access to a vaccine now, and those who choose not to be vaccinated aren't. The only thing that's going to change in two weeks is our government will give us permission to not wear masks. There is seriously something wrong with this situation, and too many are blinded to what is happening right in front of our eyes. I know a majority of those sitting behind me right now agree with me on this issue because the minute you all stepped out for close session, over half the people out here pulled their masks off. And you step back in, we're complying. That's what I see is compliance, and it's scary. Lastly, I would like to know, or I would like to make you aware that I posted a poll in our Richmond group and asked, it's called Stand Up Blue Devils, for those of you who would like to support us in our cause, first of all. I created a poll on there, and I asked, will you homeschool this fall if masks are mandatory and there is vaccination, discrimination, or segregation? After being posted for just four hours, there were 20 people who voted yes. That's 20 families minimum that will pull their children from this school if we don't fight against this tyranny. At this point, I'm extremely skeptical, but I am still hopeful that there are a few of you up here that still support us and will take a stand with us. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comments? Okay. We will be moving on to Superintendent and Legislative Updates.
Okay, Board members, in your packet, there were several letters that I have received from other districts. I said I would give them to you if you wanted to take a position, what other districts have done, just as a point of reference for you. Second, that is correct, I did send a communication out. There have been several of the Combe County schools that have done vaccination clinics. I received a call from our EMS Director, Jeff White, who asked if the district would be interested. I am not at a position where anybody is required to get a vaccination, but as I follow the politics of what's going on, and I've said this from day one, please watch the 11th-hour deals that are cut, because if, if you can go into store now and they're saying that you can, don't have to wear a mask if you're vaccinated, but you have to wear a mask if you are, it's only time, my view, my belief, that that's going to be what I believe the state will require. Do I believe, support that? Absolutely not. However, Mr. White had asked me, I said absolutely, because I have at least four emails from parents recently saying, why aren't we doing something in helping families get vaccination? So that's the only reason why I offered it. To the parents that spoke, you're absolutely right, parents do have a right to call the Health Department, and they can set it up and so forth. Jeff asked me for the staff to help out because he does not have the personnel. When I talked to Marge, she was very supportive of it. We collect a name, a phone number, we turn it over to Jeff White, the parent has to be there for the students, so from that angle. It is completely optional, but I will say over and over, watch your 11th-hour deals, because that's how we got this last year. Our original plan, the board approved, was people wear their mask if they want to. It was optional. And the, the cut or the deals that had to be made was, we had to follow the Health Department's guidelines, which required us to wear masks all year long. So, second, in the letter, talked about the school calendar. We do not have a school calendar yet for 2021. We are in the process of negotiating a contract extension, which is also deals with the 2021 contract year. So, third, in the letter, talked about what will instruction look like? We're trying to get a sense of how many parents still want to consider a virtual option. That's part of the negotiation process with the teachers union, what that virtual option looked like. When the letter was released, I don't know, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock today, we already have almost 300 people that had responded to the survey. Obviously, as you've heard tonight, and it's been a practice all year, majority of our parents want in-person learning, and that's what we are planning for. We have gone through with the construction, and we've taken down all the, the labels off doors are coming down, the stuff, trying to get to a normal school year for next year. But I just remind everybody, just please pay attention to what happens in the legislative. The deals from the, holding up our funding, it's not holding students hostage, it's, we're in the middle of this. RS are $3 that were allocated back many, many months ago, still aren't here, but there's over a billion dollars more in the school aid fund, and we're looking at $100 per pupil. It's somewhat laughable, and we're trying to, to run this district. So the dollars are there for the school aid, it's just the politics that get involved. Finally, for those families that have pre-registered, I just want to remind you, there is a process to finish that pre-registration. We have been doing staffing allocations today for the preschool program. We want to make sure we have the right number of teachers and parapros for that, so if you haven't completed, I'd encourage you to complete that process. On a side note, we do have several families that did choose to homeschool their child this year that have completed the family, the process. Now, that is cautionary because we don't know what's going to come over the summer, but it is promising that they are still committed to Richmond. Last week was the last week of school. We ended with many of the celebrations and award ceremonies. I want to thank the parents who watched virtually. My hope is that next year, we are back in person and having the grandmas and grandpas and moms and dads all there to support our students at the end of the year. And finally, I'll just give you on the bond, as you can see, a lot of the construction has started. It is literally when the school went out on Thursday, Friday, they moved a lot, the asbestos abatement has begun in many of the buildings, roads are being tore up, so we are full speed ahead and planning to be back in school after Labor Day. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, items of interest from the board. Angela, anything?
I would just like to thank again the parents for coming out and speaking up on behalf of us. I am a board member, and while I would like to be able to voice some of my opinions, you know, I do have to be open-minded, and we do have to, as a board, represent both sides up here, and it is difficult. There are many parents that do want the vaccine and people that do believe in that. So it is tough for us, and I do appreciate you for standing up for our students, and thank you for coming out.
Bridgette?
I guess I just wanted to say that I was a little bit disappointed. I also, when I got the letter from the school district without really knowing that it was happening, I was a little bit disappointed that we weren't going to partner with the EMS, because I probably would have said no. I don't believe in the vaccination, that's my personal opinion. That's my personal opinion, and I don't feel that we should be encouraging our families to be getting it. And so I was a little bit disappointed that we weren't brought in in the conversation of whether we felt we should do it or not.
Thank you. Good. Kyle?
I would just like to say how wonderful graduation was, because that's happened since the last time we met, and I thought everybody did a fantastic job, and it was a beautiful night at Jimmy John's, and a lot of positive feedback, and I just thought it was exceptional.
Danielle?
Kind of echoing what everybody else said, graduation was awesome. It was absolutely gorgeous, and that rain held out, so that was great. But, kind of like Angela said, I'm also now a parent in the district with my four-year-old, so I do have those same feelings and those same hesitations that you guys brought up, and it's super frustrating for me because he hasn't worn a mask since day one, and the fact that I have to put it on him for three minutes to walk into the building every day is hard. And he hasn't ever gotten sick, so, you know, there's that. And to echo Bridgette's comments of, we got a heads-up on the email, but it was a heads-up of a few minutes. It wasn't something that was kind of discussed or brought about, hey, what are your feelings? What are your opinions? It was, hey, this is going out. Oh, next email, hey, it's here. I got it from the parent end of my parent email. So just more of a heads-up and communication would be amazing, even if we just left that line off that said, you know, if you want to help out, like you guys mentioned, you know, get vaccinated. Probably not the best line, I don't know, but that's my take.
Thank you. Margaret?
Sorry, I don't have a copy for you, but Bridgette, take that and pass it down. That's just, I get on my soapbox, and I know it distresses some people sitting at this table, but that is just the report that was created by, for the Michigan School Finance Collaborative. It is the report that was done in 2018 talking about what it takes to educate a student in Michigan, and they updated it, and I just made copies for the board. I did see that it was on our website for parents. It is an astounding report. They now say that it costs $10,421 to, per pupil, to educate, and the money that we get from the state, $7,871?
Eight, one, one.
Eight, thousand, eleven? Are we, okay, eight thousand, eleven. So we don't even get from the people that decide what kind of money we get, we don't even get anywhere near this amount of money. So I just want everybody, if you have, have some time to look at it and maybe understand where I'm coming from when I jump on my soapbox. And I just want to make the comment about the email or letter that Mr. Walmsley sent out. He does run the school district, and if he chose to partner with the EMS, it is always good to try to work with community organizations. So I have no problem that that's the choice that he made because he does run the school district.
Sheri?
I just wanted to also thank the parents for speaking out, up again. Nothing is more important when you're a parent than advocating for your children, so I appreciate that. Also, I wanted to thank the teachers and all the staff for all their hard work all year, and I want to wish them a very happy and relaxing summer. And those working the summer program, try to find some time to relax also. Thank you to everybody.
Okay, the last item that I have is, Mr. Walmsley provided us some letters to look at as far as making a statement and said to get on to Lansing about where we stand as a district. And part of that piece that we discussed was that we would like to make a local decision so that we can work with a committee of our local, be it EMS, be it other schools in the area, that we make decisions for us locally instead of coming from it. So I am looking for a group of three people, and I'll gladly be one of them, to help me sit down and compose a letter that we can bring back to the board that we can agree on, and then we will then forward that on to Lansing. So Sheri?
Yes.
Anybody else want, Danielle?
Yes.
Okay, so, so Brian, so myself, Danielle, and Sheri. So we will have a letter together before our next board meeting that we will share with you, with, and then we will then forward it on.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we now are moving on to our action items. Our first one, I am looking for a motion for the approval to purchase teacher furniture.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract to school specialty for teacher furniture for an amount not to exceed $350,742.25. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond Series One is available.
Do I have a support?
Support.
That's Sheri. Any discussion? Okay, this is a roll-call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Angelo?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item is the approval of steam tables and stools for the Will Lee Elementary School and the Richmond Middle School.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract to school specialty for steam tables and stools at Will L. Lee Elementary School and Richmond Middle School for an amount not to exceed $32,620.36. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond Series One is available.
Do I have a support?
Support.
Okay, we have to, we'll give it to Danielle. Any discussion? Okay, this is a roll-call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Angelo?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next action item, I'm looking for a motion for the K-12 Social Studies Curriculum and Instructional Resources.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the K-12 Social Studies Curriculum as presented and authorize the purchase of weekly readers for grades K through 5 for a weekly, for a yearly total of $5,413.95, and networks for grade 6 through 12 for a six-year total not to exceed-
and networks for grade 6 through 12 for a six-year total not to exceed $79,920.45 as outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Danielle? Any discussion?
Other than thanking Mr. and the team for.
For a great job. Okay, this is a roll call vote. Angela?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the 2021 millage tax request.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent's approval of the 2021 tax rate request, L 4029, as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have a support?
Sure.
Danielle? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the amendment to the contract with ESCO Roofing and Sheet Metal for the Richmond Middle School Roofing Project.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and amend the original contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 7.1 Roofing and Metal Panels to ESCO Roofing and Sheet Metal Inc. less $228,650 from the original December 10, 2020 approved contract. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project as presented at the June 4, 14, 2021 board meeting on behalf of the Board of Education.
I have a second?
Support.
Is this a roll call vote because it does have a dollar amount in it?
Because you're, you're reducing it significantly.
Yes. Okay, so this is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to negotiate the sale of the Richmond Roosevelt Civic Auditorium.
I motion to direct the superintendent. In consultation with the district's attorney to negotiate the sale of the Roosevelt Civic Auditorium, property ID 0602-226009 and old bus garage, property ID 0602-226008 to City of Richmond as allowed by board policy within the parameters set forth by the Board of Education and as outlined by the attached resolution.
Support. Margaret's supported. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to Section 8(c) of the Michigan Open Meeting Act, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of negotiations.
Do I have a support?
Support.
Okay, all those in favor? Or any discussion, sorry, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the board will go into closed session at 9:48.